Good evening. Welcome to the January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. Everyone is in attendance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item is student representatives from the middle school, and we have Spencer Walker and Sanjeev Puvindendra Kumar. Please come up to the table and join us.
Welcome.
Thank you, Vivian. Hi, I'm Sanjeev. Tuesday, January twenty-third will mark the ninetieth day of the school year and the end of the first semester. It seems hard to believe that we are halfway through this year and one step closer to the high school. Parent-teacher conferences will happen on February first from twelve o'clock to two-thirty. Ski club. Winter's here. The weather is finally cooperating, and skiers and snowboarders are looking forward to hitting the slopes today, January seventeenth. Let's hope Mother Nature continues to cooperate on Wednesdays. Students in grades six through eight have been enjoying the powder at Neshoba Valley for some fun New England skiing. Homework club. As the, as the school year progresses, Homework club has seen a giant boost in attendance. Students from all grade levels have been attending to complete homework, make-up work, projects, or simply to collaborate with their peers. It has been a great opportunity for students to complete work in a quiet, yet collaborative environment. Students in the World Culture Club have been learning about the Chinese culture and the celebration of Lunar New Year. They have been lis- listening to traditional music and celebrating the unique customs of the culture. Robotics. In the past month, the robotics club has taken off with an exciting blast into FTC First Tech Competition. The members of this club had the opportunity to attend two separate competition dates where they competed against different teams at the high school level. Overall, the placement for both of the teams was extraordinary and with an impressive third and fourth place in both comps. The crowd was excited as well. The middle school robotics club also received two awards and is proud to say that even though the competitions are over, the students' love for STEM isn't. Stay tuned for the upcoming STEM fair.
The Wilmington Middle School Drama Club proudly presents The Little Mermaid Junior. Prepare to be swept away by the talented cast of young performers as they bring to life the beloved characters in captivating story from the classic Disney animated film in the original Broadway musical. Don't miss the opportunity to witness the incredible talent of our cast of our cast composed of sixty-four students from grade six to eight. This is one of the largest cast that we had in drama history. With the integral support of twenty-three middle school crew members, twelve high school, uh, crew supervisors, and seven enthusiastic production team members. Under the direction of Samantha Prindaville, the students have dedicated countless hours to rehearsing and perfecting their roles, promising an unforgettable experience for all attendees. In addition to favorite, into the favorites like Part of Your World and the unforgettable, in the unforgettable Poor and Fortunate Souls, you'll also have experience of toe-tapping dance numbers and including Under the Sea, Les Puzan, She's in Love, and delightful number of Scuttle and his seagull buddies called Human Stealth. The performances will take place at Wilmington High School on Thursday, January eighth at six-thirty PM, Friday, January ninth at six-thirty PM, Saturday, January twentieth at three PM. Finally, one of the most exciting events in two thousand and twenty-four is Project Three-Fifty-One. On Saturday, Grace LaMonica represented the town of Wilmington at the Project Three-Fifty-One Launch Day Event. Project Three-Fifty-One is a statewide student-led community service organization. On Saturday, we kicked off a year of service by having ambassadors from all three hundred and fifty-one towns and cities en masse join together to do a full day of community service in Boston. Grace participated in Cradles to Crayons, which directly impacted two thousand five hundred lives with their service projects. Statewide ambassadors impacted the lives of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-four lives statewide across three service sites. With much laughter, dancing, and gratitude, the Project Three Hundred and Fifty-One ambassadors positively impacted thousands of lives with our one-day service. Project Three-Fifty-One has positively impacted over one million lives since its inception.
Thank you so much. Questions and comments, Ms. Burns?
I have two questions, and don't, if you can't answer them, just let me know. So my first question is Project Three-Fifty-One, very familiar through conferences that they've presented and they've, that they've spoken, which I think is absolutely fabulous. And I guess it's more of a comment that with Project Three-Fifty-One and the community-based service pathway that it gives the, all of our youth ambassadors. I don't know, but it's, as you said, it is so impactful to the families and students and the kids that it impacts, but it, it, there's such a large segue with regards to what our public schools do with regards to that social service base, that it, it only supports our mission in serving our students in that way. And it's, it's so, granted, I know it's a much broader, a much broader population this organization covers, but I think it's absolutely fantastic. And I thank you and the ambassador for taking that time to be a part of such a huge piece in others' lives and in your peers' lives as well. And the second question is a little silly, but I don't know if you're a part of the ski club or not. So I know you go to Neshoba, but does anybody forego like the skis and just do tubing? I'm just curious.
I'm not sure. I'm not part of the ski club.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know if on the, you know, on the
That'd be nice to get.
Thalmo, if, I was just curious.
Some of my friends, they usually just go there for tubing sometimes.
Oh, really?
But they also ski at the same time.
I see. That's great. That's great. I was just curious. Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Burke, for being here as well. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. And if there is no objection, we'll do this in one fell swoop. All right, so we have approval of minutes from the December twentieth regular session. We have warrants grant seventeen revolving thirty and thirty-one, local fifty-three through fifty-eight, food service twenty-nine and thirty-one through thirty-five, circuit breaker fourteen. We have payroll for January third, two thousand and twenty-four, and January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and special education warrants twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Burns, second by Mr. Fenelly, and all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much, and that takes us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Two items of business tonight under the report, and they'll go in order. The first is an update on the MSBA Wildwood Project. There has been an awful lot of activity that has been taking place with our owner's project manager, as well as our designer, Doran Whittier. In addition to that, a number of people from the leadership team, both the central office, as well as our principals that are connected to the three schools that are included as part of this project for consideration, obviously on the north side of town. The memo outlines a lot of the focus on space planning as of late. As members of the committee know, we, with this project, are obligated to explore a whole variety of possibilities for what the new school building could include. In terms of grade ranges, that includes pre-K to K, pre-K to grade three, and pre-K to grade five. The work to date, and it has been extensive, is to collectively, as a group, as a team, explore what the requirements would be within those different configurations of buildings. Everything from office space to, obviously, teaching and learning space and literally everything in between. So it's rather extensive process, and it's moving forward at a fairly rapid rate and with a pretty aggressive timeline. The timeline, just as a reminder, is set by the Mass School Building Authority. So they have, they have a very clear picture, driven by our owner's project manager, of where we need to be in this program. There are many dates in which deliverables have to be forthcoming, and we are on schedule, and the project certainly is in a good position as we move, as we move forward with this. There are, again, continues to be an additional sort of number of meetings right now with the Wildwood School Building Committee. A little bit more intense during this time period. We most recently had the, January, we met on January tenth, and during that meeting, our designer provided an overview of the various pre-K to grade-five conceptual building options. All of, for those interested who may be watching at home, not only are these meetings recorded, but all of the information presented is available on the district's website. I know there's a lot of information to take in, but we're trying our very best to make sure that it's accessible and available to anyone who's interested. The next Wildwood School Building Committee meeting is scheduled for January the twenty-fifth. This is going to be a remote meeting, and at this meeting, there will be a presentation of the various pre-K to K and pre-K to grade-three conceptual options. And again, we, that we post that agenda. We include the link for anyone wishing to join. Anyone is welcome to. These are, these are open meetings to anyone who wishes to join. We are looking forward to the next community forum. This will be the second community forum. This is an effort specifically targeting anyone from the community, from our staff, who might wish to learn more as an update. We know that there's an awful lot of building, meetings, sorry, taking place, and it's a very busy time of the year. So we know that not everyone can attend those meetings that I just mentioned, but the, there will be periodic community forums. And as I mentioned, the next one is scheduled for February first at six-thirty. The forum is going to be also held virtually. We continue to believe that that's a great way to provide the opportunity for anyone to access it. We think that that's oftentimes, not always, but oftentimes, a better format, and so we're going to do that. The meeting will be recorded at the forum. And there's a flyer that's circulating, and we will do our best, both through my office as well as through our schools, to make sure that the community is well aware of the forum. There really are three primary targets on the agenda for that meeting. The first will be an overview of the educational visioning and guiding principles that our design team is working with, based upon the feedback they've heard from many, many meetings thus far in our community. They'll provide a space summary review and a conceptual school building option that is being considered. So please watch for that. And then finally, the Wildcat Corner. I just mentioned that in the memo recently. We, I sat down for the latest, one of the latest editions of that to speak with our owner's project manager, as well as Vivian Varbedian, who is a resident, the vice chair of the Wildwood School Building Committee, and actually herself an owner's project manager. I thought it would be appropriate to introduce the both of them to our community. So lots of information going on. Again, the interest to try to make sure that this committee and our community is up to speed on this really important project for our community. I'll pause on that if there are any questions from members of the committee on the work associated with the MSBA project.
Dr. Rinaldi.
Yeah, thanks. So before I ask my question, just for anyone who's like listening or not, going through the presentation that was given, I believe, on the January tenth meeting, those designs look quite impressive, and it looks like that there could be a K through five option at any site, Wuburn Street, Wildwood, and North Intermediate, with more options depending on square footage. But I thought it was pretty clever how they were segregating out some of the older students from some of the younger students and making sure that they all would satisfy their needs. So I thought that was pretty impressive. Yeah, I was just wondering for you was kind of what are the next steps? I think I saw like a scorecard exercise would be next, and maybe you could just walk us through what's going to be happening next with those options.
If I can, just go back to your first point, and thank you for raising that, your observation. Yeah, that's a great example where our, our design firm, again, Doran Whittier, they are not just coming in and sort of rolling out a template of what a school building might look like for how many students we have and their grade-level configurations. They are really working hard to be responsive to what they have heard through our many community conversations and the educational visioning. What you just mentioned there is a great example of that, where there was some strong feedback around trying to cluster together grade levels as sort of smaller communities. So thanks for raising that, and it's just, I think, does speak to their effort to try and be responsive to what, you know, there's no one sort of boilerplate template for school that's the same in one community to the next. In terms of the scorecard, yeah, we'll, we will soon enough get to a point that will probably be in February, my understanding is, in terms of all of the various options, and the members of the Wildwood School Building Committee will, will be asked to rank or score those. It'll be a, you know, a well-laid-out matrix, a matrix that will provide an opportunity for members to score various aspects or features of the different buildings to try and drive, you know, us forward to sort of what the one preferred option will be. There's still a lot of work to go. This is, you know, very high level right now. They are, as you mentioned, they're, they're exploring, just on paper, the ability to fit a building, say, a pre-K to five on all of the sites. I know some people at home might be saying, well, how is that even possible? You know, the Wildwood site, but they actually have to as part of their due diligence. It's too early in the process to rule out any particular site. So there's still a lot of work to go, but they're getting to that sort of more granular level right now.
Thank you.
I would also add, add on to that, that as you, as, as we go through these meetings and look at these conceptual designs, I think it's notable how often that when the committee members ask questions, that the answers go back to those, that visioning that was done initially. So again, it's not something that they just came up with just like, well, we just thought it would have to be something. We thought we'd just try it this way. A time and time again, the answer says, well, what came out of visioning was a desire to see X, Y, and Z, and this is an attempt to, you know, and not necessarily the final way. They're, they're constantly listening for feedback from the committee and the community about what the final project will be. But this really is something that comes back to the visioning process and the guiding principles. So there was, you know, in a few meetings in the past, that the committee came up with a series of guiding principles that sort of, you know, again, emerged from visioning, but become just like a list of, these are the principles that we want to be following as we, you know, construct this school. And that's what will form those matrices, that when we start evaluating the options, it will be against these guiding principles that have already been developed through the visioning process and through this collaborative process with SMMA and Doran Whittier that, that gets us to, you know, an appropriate evaluation of where we want to be. Mr. Turner.
So, and one thing to just to the next step on that. The other piece they bring to it is their experience more broadly. And on the scorecard will be things that are not specific necessarily to the building, but to the site, traffic pattern, you know, is it sewer or septic? Are those sorts of basic things that can really be impactful to selecting a site? Yeah, the building fits, but, you know, if we're, if it won't work, like literally to get the kids in and out every morning, then that's a significant negative to that, to one particular side or the other. And so I think the layers of the important educational drivers, the community vision, and their experience with the broader picture of how it fits into the community will really be helpful. And I'm looking forward to the scorecarding piece of it. I think it'll be interesting to see.
Ms. Burns.
So just a, a quick, I guess, clarifying question. At what point, once this pro, this part of the process down, and we start narrowing our direction, will it be brought back to the board? Would it be possible to have that presentation of those three options? For a board discussion? I mean, once, what'll it done? Because I think that's, it's, I think it's such a vital place right now with regards to getting to that point. And I know you'll have to, I guess, present it to the MSBA at, I'm not sure when that deadline is. But I just didn't know if that was going to, planning on being done prior to it being brought forth to the MSBA, or, and just out of
Yeah, I think it's important, a couple of things in response. So first off, we, we still, you know, there's a, there's a lot of, you're getting a sense of, I'm sure, a lot of activity right now. It's an awful lot right now with the stage that we're in.
And certainly don't want to slow it down by.
We have the community forums planned, but we also, it's not lost upon myself, both in this role of superintendent and the chair of this committee, to figure out ways that we can provide an update to the other governing boards in town. This school, this committee is one. Obviously, we have some others as well, too, to make sure that they can be informed. So there will be those opportunities to provide some feedback. The community forums are a rich opportunity to do so. In addition, the Wildwood School Building Committee meetings is, just as a reminder for, for those watching at home, the decision-maker ultimately on this project, obviously short of the town being asked to vote and approve an eventual project, the decision-maker on this project is the Wildwood School Building Committee. That includes representation from this committee, from our finance committee, from our select board, staff, and, and administrators, parents, guardians. So as we explore opportunities for feedback, it's going to be critical in the coming months to get that feedback to, to our designer so that they can try and make informed decisions and ultimately influence, you know, decision-making of the, of the Wildwood School Building Committee. So there's, 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 I don't want you, the, the final decision's still many, many months away. There's a lot of process that still has to unfold and lots of additional community outreach, so.
It's, I was just, just think that in past experiences as well, and this doesn't have to follow past precedents or anything like that. I do think that once it gets to that juncture, that, because we can't be at a community forum collectively, per se, and speak to it in any formal capacity. So that's why I offer that at that point. Whether, I mean, granted, there's no voting aspect to it, but I, I think collectively as a board, I know, I would be, you know, you have so much more insight for the, those who, who sit, because you follow that process, but I, I just, I just, I just, I just think it, it may be a good basis since to have the school committee weigh in as formally, as opposed, you know, because otherwise that can't occur.
I think, I think we, you shouldn't, as my suggestion would be, you shouldn't, as a committee, forget about the fact that you do have a representative representation on that committee. And so obviously, should it be, for example, an agenda item that you may wish, you know, that Mr. Ragstow's chair wishes to add in the future, that perhaps that's one avenue in which there can be a broader discussion as a committee, and then that information could be taken, you know, taken forth through, you know, through that point of connection.
Okay, that, great. Thank you.
Okay. The second, the second item tonight, update regarding new social emotional learning staff position memo in, in the packet that you'll see from Ms. Brown-Legrande, who's here today, and Ms. Murray's not here today, but she helped write it, I know, and Alice is here if you have any questions. But we, we are excited about our ability to expand and add some additional capacity as we, as a school district still have not lost our focus on and recognize the need to provide additional support for our families and for our students. As you know, we added into the budget a year ago, as those grants expired, our two social family engagement specialists, I'm sorry. And while two is a fantastic asset to have and resources to have for our district, I can tell you that they are, they are flat out and working extensively with families and students, and the needs only continue to grow. So we, with the leadership of Alice and Christine, had the opportunity to pursue this grant. It is a grant-funded position. This has been before you previously. But with this memo, just to announce that Melissa Koster will be joining us. It's a one-year grant-funded position, as mentioned, for the balance of this school year. So this will provide us, as a school district, with some additional capacity and at least for the year. And wanted to share that announcement. Happy to pause if you have any questions.
Again, thank you for the effort to get the grant.
Thanks. Well, and thank you. And that's it this evening. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have public comment. Mr. Fenelly.
Very good. Thank you. No members of the community signed up in advance for public comment. We did receive a few submissions, which are in the packet and have been read prior to the meeting, but we will open up to public comment if there's anybody who'd like to speak. Nope. Okay, very good.
All right, that brings us to new business. And first, under new business is a presentation on all-day preschool planning. Ms. Bissell and Ms. Walsh.
Sure, sure. Yeah, thank you. As, as, as our guest, bless you, come forward tonight. Just provide some context here for this item before you. Receive a, and in the packet as well, for people who are at Alma, a focused presentation on all-day preschool planning. We've talked about this previously, back to the Wildwood project for just a moment, that one of the documents that, as a, as a school district, we have to and you have to authorize our submission for, for the project is an educational program plan. In, in other words, think about it as, there's a lot of work building the, the brick and mortar of what the new school will be, but the MSBA also requires a school district to submit a plan for what's going to happen inside that new school facility. I can tell you that there's been an awful lot of work that has been happening in the background and continues, leading us to a place in which in March, you'll have that educational program plan before you for your approval. And we just didn't grab March out of thin air. It's, it's just another example of a deliverable that this project needs to provide to the MSBA. You have a meeting mid-March, I forget the exact date, but it's the anticipation that we'll have that program planned for you for your approval to submit. There are, as we worked more and more on this plan, there are some larger pieces or components of it that I think it's fair to say we realize we might want just a little bit more time to share with you as a school committee on, and this is one of them, preschool planning. And so tonight, Ms. Bissell's here from Bowwell, Ms. Walsh, and Ms. Brown-Legrande provide you with some of their thinking around what preschool will look like and what we intend to include in this program plan for your consideration, what this will look like when we open the doors five years from now. So, thank you.
I also just wanted to note that Maura, our coordinator of special education, also participated, and Diane Seaco, who's one of our team chairs of the early childhood center. No, that's okay. But figured we're short for space, so.
I've got plenty over here.
So I think what we're going to do tonight is just talk about, a little bit about the purpose of preschool, kind of the model that we've had, what we currently have, kind of where we're going, and then looking at kind of the structure of the day and what our programs look like a little bit. I know I was here last year talking about IDEA, the Individuals with Disability Education Act, so I'm going to mention that again, because it has a lot to do with preschool programming. So if you think about IDEA, there's three portions of it. One is the Part A, which is like grant funding, research. Part B is for students that are school age, that we provide services for from ages three to twenty-two. Part C is for early intervention, so students, children, excuse me, that are from birth through age three, when the school districts become responsible. And so the purpose of publicly funded preschool, right? So we're talking about public schools at this point, is to provide services for students with disabilities inside the school district with typical peers. So I know sometimes people forget that, because your child may have gone to maybe a center-based place versus a school district. But the purpose for publicly funded preschool is for students with disabilities. So all typically, when I say that loosely, publicly funded preschools have a combination of students with disabilities and typically developing peers. And that's really the model for early childhood. So when we think about our program, we kind of have two sets of programs. We have integrated programming, and then we have other programs for students that have a higher level of disability need, which is where we talk about strides. When you look at that, the, the model, so what happens is kids will oftentimes age out of early intervention. They do an eligibility meeting, so they have the evaluations completed by the school district. If we determine they still require special education services, they will age into our district at age three. So generally speaking, you're looking at kind of a couple of years before they get to kindergarten. They can come at any point, so if they turn three in March, they enter on their birth date, essentially, in March throughout the year. So it's kind of a rolling admissions, is kind of the way of thinking about it. If a child is four and the disability gets picked up at four, then they come in at four, if that's, you know, what's recommended by the team. So that first year is really looking at, you know, becoming kind of comfortable and familiar with the setting, exposure to academic and social opportunities, focusing on play. Year two, for a four- or five-year-old, continue to kind of move those skills forward, a little bit more focus on kind of pre-K, thinking before kindergarten skills, so more academic, a little bit more literacy in math. Kind of is the general profile, if you think of our programming. And so I, I think sometimes people forget that that's the purpose of preschool in a public-funded entity, is for students with disabilities with typically developing peers.
So the history of preschool programming in Wilmington, prior to the fall of two thousand and twenty, and Bowwell and Wildwood both housed two half-day sessions, which was one classroom, and we also housed a full-day session. So we offered both the half-day and full-day integrated preschool programs for students with disabilities in order for students to learn and develop, as Alice mentioned, with their typically developing peers. The program utilized district-wide academic curriculum, but it also provided services which were available with related staff members, so such as speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, BCBAs, physical therapists. They were available to provide services for students services for students and also to consult with teachers to help support those students. During the COVID-19 pandemic, due to the space requirements that was, you know, passed down from the state level, we had to eliminate the full-day programming because of the space. And since that, it has not yet been reinstated due to enrollment fluctuation over the past few years since COVID and pro, pro, program needs. So.
Can I just jump in? Just to clarify, just, so the space constraints, we just don't have the space in those two schools, right? So if there was more, there were additional classrooms, we, correct me if I'm wrong, we could have continued to offer it, but because we were out, literally, of physical space, classroom space.
So obviously with what had gone, happened with the Wildwood, you know, with the elimination of a school, you know, trying to house all of those programs, it just was not possible. And also, you know, when we reopened, if you will, back, again, it seems like it was 100 years ago, but then again, just yesterday, when we started in the fall, you know, we were very careful just because we weren't sure which, if the state was going to go back to six feet, if they were going to stay three feet, and so it was really fluctuating, so we were careful, and so we made sure that we kept, you know, the, those space requirements back then.
So just clarification, so it was due to the COVID protocols?
Correct.
Because of that, having to sanitize and, okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, and we had to keep.
As opposed to building space capacity.
We had, yeah, we had an enormous amount of students also go remote.
Yeah.
And then those that were in school, we had to keep them six feet apart, they couldn't be, yeah, all of those, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't room, that it was due to those.
And then we also had to make sure.
Exactly.
Yep, we also had to make sure for those that were in those programs, you know, there were some students who, you know, if they were there the full day, some parents were only comfortable sending them in maybe half the day, you know, again, it was all around due to the COVID pandemic.
Thank you.
Yep.
One last point of clarification on this particular slide. This was the integrated classrooms, two half-day, one full-day, there was also a separate classroom for the kids that had higher needs within the strides program.
Correct.
One at each school?
Uh, no, back, back then, they were only at the Wildwood.
They were only at the Wildwood, okay, too Wildwood, okay, so a total of.
It has since expanded.
A total of two for six classrooms between the whole program for preschool.
No. No.
Two Wildwood, two, two.
Two strides, two full day, and then two half-day each.
Yep, so six, yep, six.
Six classrooms.
Cause, yep, six classrooms, yep.
Yep.
So again, as mentioned, the half-day integrated program is designed to expose students to school readiness, pre-academic skills, and those social interactions with peers. It is a two-and-a-half-hour day, offered Monday through Thursday. If you are in a half-day program, you either come in the morning or in the afternoon. All of our half-day integrated preschool programs are taught by a special education teacher and supported by a full-time educational assistant. This is just a quick sample, again, times are approximate and the schedule reflects current programming, so I just want to make sure that, so you'll see that that is your typical half-day integrated preschool program schedule at both the Wildwood and the Bowwell. So.
Do you want me to do this one, or do you want to?
So the full-day integrated preschool program, again, as Alice had mentioned, those students who require more in-depth exposure to school readiness or pre-academic skills, this was, again, I just want to remind you that this was prior to the fall of 2020, okay? It was five-and-a-half hours a day, Monday through Thursday, and again, the class was taught by a special education teacher as well as supported by a full-time educational This is, again, just a brief kind of, you know, schedule, approximate times, this reflects the pre-pandemic programming, this programming is not currently offered in Wilmington public schools right now, which is the full day.
So currently, what we actually offer today is that each of our buildings, so Wildwood and Bowwell, each have two integrated preschool classrooms, each of which run two sessions. So that's four sessions per, per school, but two classrooms. We also have the strides programs, the Wildwood houses three of those classrooms, and the Bowwell houses one at this time. Those are, continue to remain full-day programs since, due to the level of need of those students. And we also offer some level of drive-in services for students who may require a lower level of support or simply maybe one service a week, those students come in just and receive those services at our buildings with our providers. There is no full-day integrated program on this list. And as we consider where we want to go and move forward, we are proposing that we would maintain our half-day sessions. Due to enrollment, we are, I think neither of us in a place to move to fewer than four sections of preschool, which would require three classrooms if one is full day, we would therefore prefer to maintain the four classes or two classrooms of half-day integrated preschool and add in one full-day session at each building. And we would maintain the strides programming as well to meet the needs of those students.
We did take a look, just in terms of other towns, and because I know things have changed also for other towns, but, you know, from the surrounding districts, we were thinking kind of of the, those that border Wilmington, all but one have a full-day option back currently running. I think we, things we other, otherwise have to consider is we obviously are adding teacher, educational assistant to, to buildings, just, you know, there's a financial impact to that. And then I think there's other things that the district does have to consider, which wasn't necessarily in this, kind of our purview, so to speak, particularly if we're looking at the, you know, a new building as being part of this, the length of the day potentially, programming options, tuition rates, things, other things, so perhaps cares, not cares, and things like that, I think are the things that the districts have to, going to have to consider when we look at some of the other options.
I'll wait until you're done, I don't want to.
I think that was pretty much it, yeah.
Ms. Burns.
So I had a couple, because I'm very well-versed in this, and I wanted, I wanted to make sure I understood, which I, which I appreciate the clarification, because it answered some of my questions, because I remember that, in my personal experience, that it doesn't seem that it changed, because I thought you were taking away, in a, in a sense, in some capacity, and so I had questions surrounding, you know, I knew that usually went, well, it was called, I think, the PP, the PDD classroom, now it's called strides. So I always, I got to tell you, I'm, I'm still old-school in the vernacular, so, so correct me if I, if I, if I go astray, but I know that they would, at intervals and parts during e, either session, integrating the kids in the substantially separate classroom, and, but I see that that's still happening.
Yeah, even in terms of the planning for the Wildwood, when we had to, you know, go between the West, and that was a big piece of it, making sure that our specialized programs, our strides programs were together with a pre-K program so that they could integrate, wouldn't have to walk across the street, kind of anything like that, so that was a big piece, making sure that they were attached together.
So I, I have a, a question, I, I don't know, it's, it's tough, once you go back, to go forward again.
Yeah.
I, I do think that, especially with the way, and I say this broadly, you know, the, you know, Department of Early Education is driving, they, you know, we're still talking about, you know, a full-day pre, you know, they're.
First pre-K.
Right, and, and, so it, it, would it be, I, I wanted to get an idea, are, are we waiting for the new building to consider full day, the full-day option, or is there a plan to maybe, perhaps, house it at one of the schools? Because since it's not reliant on public bus transportation, it, at least giving parents that option to make that choice, to see if perhaps those, we would have that enrollment, and then, as we've done with the kindergarten piece, expand upon that. And I know with tuition and that keeping up with the society, the cost, I know it was always very reasonable, especially considering the other programming that offer full day, I mean, that, but I didn't know, perhaps, I would rather not wait for a new building in order to see this come back to fruition, so I didn't know if, you know, perhaps a different pathway with small steps, you know what I mean, whether it's polling the community on interest, or, but I, I do, I do think that we, in order for us to, when the school, new school building does happen, I would rather see it be flourishing, inviable, and people knocking at the door.
Yeah.
Than sort of trying to wake people up, saying, oh yeah, by the way, now we offer this after eight years, or five years of no, not being able to offer it, but I do, would recommend if at all possible.
Well, just, if, if, I'll just, if I can, to just, and, jump in here, but.
Please do.
So just as a point of reminder to bring you full circle, this is, this is here to, to bring you up to speed in terms of what our thinking and plan is going forward. There is a connection with space, and the connection with space is in this school building. And so not only is it, with the assumption that you, as a, as a school committee, will ultimately be appro, you know, in support of bringing this back online. We want to incorporate it into the educational plan, but we also have to allow our designers to plan appropriately for educational space. So this is a great example of, they need, as our designers, to make sure that they have a full understanding of not, keep in mind, we have our enrollment on file with them, that's certified enrollment. We also have to plan accordingly for all programs, including this. So making an assumption here, and we're not looking for your vote tonight for your approval on this, but we are going to be looking for it incorporated into that educational plan that I mentioned in March. Making an assumption that this is a direction that as a committee you're, you're in support of, you're returning to, and I think there's, we, we think there's lots of reasons to think about that. We also need to be thoughtful of two other things, one, this may be a program that is going to be in the new school, it's going to open approximately five years from now on one side of town, we're going to have to, as an org, as a district, make sure that we can offer this on the other side of town. And two, if we can take steps to, and if we have space and the need to bring it online sooner than five years when the new school opens, that's our intent, right? There's budgetary issues and other things, I don't know, Alice, if you want to, if I left anything out of that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I anticipated one of the questions might be, why are we just not going back to what we did, which was one half, you know, one half-day, two sessions, one full day? One of the things we talked about kind of in the last year was the rise in the number of students that are coming out of early intervention that require special ed services. We have to be careful of the ratio to students with disabilities, to students without disabilities, and the number of students we have with disabilities, we cannot cut a section out to go back, otherwise the numbers are too high and we have a compliance issue. So the only way to, for us to move now, two years from now, well, you know, I can't predict kind of what the numbers would be, would be to now add a full-day section, because we can't cut one section out, essentially, if that makes sense.
No, it makes perfect, but I also think though, too, and I say this broadly, I know there's a lot of other pieces that.
Yeah.
Impact the, the moving, the moving forward process.
Yeah.
I think for what you, and I, I absolutely get that, so I know it's a juggling act that, and especially, I think what's looming over my head, and it will be so, is the budgetary funding that, from the state in chapter 70, in order to be able to create these new classrooms without impacting any of the programming that's currently happening within our preschool, preschool level and services, and, but I, 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 again, want to ensure that if we can keep moving forward at some capacity in the interim, because I know, I mean, we still have our preschool kindergarten house in the middle school, so we have other limitations, but I still think that it would be economically advantageous not to sit too long in order to get up to speed when we are ready to go, and, and I, again, I leave, there's, I know there's a lot of unknowns that I'm not, I know, in, in the works, especially in the, in the building area, that I don't, I, I know it, you know, in the perfect world scenario that I speak from, but, but I just, I really do think, it would be, if we can kind of do a plan of action if at all possible in the interim, as we look towards the programming for the new building project, so, but, thank you.
I also think that Kristen and Kate are kind of in touch, obviously, as you would expect, kind of with tons of parents throughout the year, and so I think they have a pretty good pulse on where people are in terms of what they're looking for, so I think that the timing of this is, because it's really kind of more come up just recently than in the previous couple of years following the pandemic, so while not necessarily in the budget for next year, there's something I think we're going to have to look at in the coming years, anyway, potentially.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
What is the range of ratios that, that is in compliance for typically developing peers to students with disabilities?
So you can have seven students with disabilities in a room of 15. Correct?
Correct.
Yes. Just double checking.
So you can have, so that would be a seven to eight ratio, students with disabilities.
Seventy, yeah, right, below 50%.
And where, and, and so, is there any minimum that that can drop down to, or?
No, there's no minimum, they, you wouldn't want, you wouldn't want one program very heavy with students with disabilities and one with not, just for, you know, teacher support and making sure kids are getting what they need out of a program, and, but there's no minimum necessarily.
Dr. McCollum?
Thanks, sir.
Sure.
Thank you for bringing this up. So I may have had a uncommon experience where my older daughter actually went to the half-day preschool at Wildwood, and, but my younger daughter couldn't, because we had to put her in daycare, and the reason behind that was because my wife went back to work. And we actually enjoyed the Wildwood preschool, we thought the level of education was good, kids had a good time there, and just getting them in the public school system early on is great. So one thing that I'd like for you to maybe consider is for some of the students that go there for the half-day or full-day, is if there can be more extended care options, like through the cares program or something like that, because that was something that then we propelled us to go daycare, because we both had work commitments and we couldn't fit in that two-and-a-half hour, or if we got into the full day, I believe it was, I think nine to 1:30, if I remember correctly, it just, we couldn't work with our working lives at all.
So thank you for mentioning that, that's one of the things both Kate and I hear a lot from parents, is the length of day, and the need for, you know, before-school or after-school care, and so on the last slide, with the considerations, looking at kind of programming options, we as, we have to look and see, you know, would cares be something that could be offered to those preschool families, what would that look like, what would the budgetary, you know, needs be? And so it is something that we are hearing from families, and so I, we want the public to know, we hear you, and we are definitely looking into, you know, and again, what surrounding towns offer, is it a pay-for-service, is it something that's offered, and, and so we're really kind of trying to dive down and look at what, what is being offered, but that is something that we are hearing from families, and it's difficult to compete with those private, you know, programs, and in ours, because some of the programs that are being offered are drop-off at seven, pick-up at six o'clock at night. And we just, we, even if we offered, say, a full, like, we just couldn't compete with that, so, so that's really, it's, it's somewhat of an uphill battle, and also, and I, I hate to bring it back to this, but it's the space, like, we just don't, like, we, we don't, we don't have a physical space, we don't have an empty classroom.
Because you couldn't have, those children, exactly.
Right.
But you could also, couldn't bring those children into a, and where we are situated right now, into an older.
Correct.
Age bracket.
Correct.
And the half-day classrooms, the other half-day is there, so there's no space necessarily for those kiddos, there's, and also in both buildings.
They're using the same classroom.
There's no old space.
So it's, it's tricky, it's really, it's really a challenge.
Yeah, no, understood, you're under a lot of space constraints right now, and I think through this, I think Glenn, you were talking about that, you know, thinking ahead of, hey, we could have a new building online, balancing that out, and then kind of listening to that feedback from the community about, like, well, what can we do now, and then maybe what can we do later?
Right.
And, you know, maybe something that can help, you know, totally understood, seven to six is going to be long for anyone.
Yeah.
Couple extra hours may help, though, and then that's, you, you have the pulse of the community, talking to a lot of parents, so you'll kind of find where that sweet spot is, and now with the post-working environment, post-COVID.
Correct.
Working environment, the seven to six may not be as much of a need anymore, but maybe something like nine to three, or something like that.
And we just want the public to know that we are hearing that, and we're taking that information, and we are trying to, you know, come up with some, some shorter-term solutions to help support those families, and then obviously looking further in the future to see, okay, what do we want to have developed in this new school, and as Glenn mentioned, just making sure that we replicate that on the west side of town as well.
Yeah, great, understood, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Turner.
So a few things, first of all, at a, at a high level, I'd support any and all preschool, I think it's a phenomenal thing, and just when you get into the whole cycle, the sooner the children are in, the more they can be ready for kindergarten, which then brings the process along for them, so at, at that simple spot, yes, please. Certainly, when I look at, we were at effectively six classrooms between the two schools, now we're at eight, and we, do we have room for the, the one more of each full day, certainly puts a strain on the buildings, and I, I can appreciate that, and then the other side is building the right community support for it from a budgetary perspective. perspective. And having people understand and acknowledge the value of preschool and how important it is for both the children that are identified with needs, but also for the children there that are there for, they're typically developing. It benefits both of them, both educationally and socially. And so I think developing that support is going to be the biggest, in some ways, the biggest challenge after you figure out the space. Good luck. So I definitely appreciate all of your time and effort on this. So thank you.
Mr. Smaha?
Thank you. And thank you for this presentation. I appreciate it. I love kind of seeing that, where we were and where we're going. And I think it all looks great. I'm curious, and I know Mrs. Burns addressed it, but you have a note about potential state guidance regarding universal pre-K. Is there any sense of?
I wish.
Like, if there is some potential, like, do you have any idea what direction it might be going? Are there options? Do we, do you know anything about that, I guess?
Probably not much more than what's kind of out there. I mean, I know that, you know, I think Governor Healy kind of just put in money for gateway cities to look at universal pre-K. And I think that that's certainly the direction, in my opinion, that the Department of Ed is heading. What I can't say is much more in terms of whether there's any funding or timeline attached to that necessarily. And, you know, I think full day pre-K is great, but it is not necessarily, when we're looking at making sure we have a range of services for all students, there are some students for whom full day pre-K is not appropriate. It's not something that would even be, you know, aging it at age three. So I think having still that range is important for a district to have.
Ms. Burns?
Just a data on the universal K. And granted, what my knowledge is a bit dated at this juncture because it's been about two years since I've actually attended a workforce council, excuse me, workforce council. So yes, it's, that universal K has been on, has been on the topic of discussion and push even at the state level for, I think, it's been on my radar for the past six years because of the Framingham School District continually plugs for that. They're one of those gateway cities that, and one of the big advocates. And even though that they, they have other challenges that we don't face, I also do think they also have some other, a little more resources when it comes to space and utilized space. But, but funding has been an issue. And I know that the big push is getting that in for everything that you've touched upon. But I also do know that one of the, one of the biggest handicaps right now that they're facing at the early education level, I don't know where it's transpired since I just couldn't keep attending meetings during the workday, is that there's not enough skilled folks going into the field of pre-K. And a lot of the gateway cities see that, they see, and COVID was a huge impact to this, is a lot of these private subsidized preschools. And I think you may be a little, you have a little insight working in the Boston Public School System, a lot of them, a lot of those preschools went away, but there was issues with retaining high qualified and educated staff. They would come in and the department was finding pathways and gateways to bring more education to these, these young early education workers. And a lot of them were taking those advantages and they were trying to capture these kids coming out of Oak Schools and public schools, trying to get them into this early education area of pre-K. And what they're finding is that a lot of them who have built their skills and education in the smaller pre-K would leave the field and go into public education. So there's always a want and a struggle. And I think we as a public school are able to offer those benefits. But that's, I think, one of the handicaps in seeing real true progress in getting universal pre-K in this state. And I, and then add the lack of accurate forecasting to the state. It's only going to put us back actually years in seeing that actually come to fruition with each passing budget cycle. So, and then thank you for allowing me to comment.
Mr. Fennel?
Thank you. And thank you for the information and the presentation. I appreciate it. I wonder if in sort of putting this together, with the exception of knowing that we would need additional staff and there are space limitations, are there any issues, concerns, roadblocks, things that you, that you came across that you thought might make this challenging to do? Or is it?
Immediately or long, long term?
I mean, both, but I would think maybe in the short term for now, just as we start to think about putting this in place, like, the next two years, is there, what are the concerns?
I, I mean, you guys can jump in, but I think one of my immediate concerns, if we were to do this tomorrow, would just be making sure we have a pool of kiddos that really want it. And so I think, you know, much to kind of what you were talking about, I think part of this is, is going to be a little bit of making sure the community is aware of what we're going to be offering, well ahead of us trying to open it to drum up business, so to speak, right? So that students want to come. I think that our, you guys can speak to this more, but our waitlist has been smaller since COVID of students that would be on the waitlist necessarily for pre-K.
And I would say, one of my concerns would be that potentially many of our typically developing peers may want the full day program and that we would also need to maintain enrollment in our half day programs to meet the needs of our special education students there. Trying to balance that will be, could be challenging.
That would have been my follow-up question, so thank you.
And I also think even if it's, you know, the same length as right now, you know, what the kindergarten is, I still think there is this need for either before school or after school care. And so I think we just have to look at that and see what would that look like? You know, how would that, how would we develop that? Because the youngest that we have for cares is kindergarten. And don't forget, when you have just three-year-olds comes, you know, there's a whole nother level. There's a whole nother, different set of need, diapering, they're not toileting, you know, so there's a whole nother set of things to consider. I think my understanding too is, in terms of that before and after school programming, with three-year-olds, it's a very different set of guidelines. Guidelines, yes. It's not, you can't take cares and just put a three-year-old in it. It doesn't work that way. No. So there's those logistics that would have to definitely be figured out.
More hands-on too. Even if you even started it with, within the half day program, the early drop off, you know what I mean? Like, for those cares, you know, for the AM session, for those PM sessions, you know, but even that, I think, down the road would at least afford parents some flexibility. Doesn't mean we can't grow from it, but I think it still, if we can get to that point, it will at least build that momentum as we move forward in trying to target the needs that you've been hearing. And I think that, you know, even with the waitlist, that may be, and I speculate purely, that that may be, you know, one of the reasons for the smaller waitlists, is because of that not having that option. And as Dr. McCallie, you know, touched upon, a lot of parents are looking for that more flexibility kind of. And so I don't know, I think once we get to at least that junction where we can actually start saying, okay, what can we, how can this look like? And what can we do to kind of structure doing the building blocks? I think it'll all, you know, it'll all fall out as we one step aside. Sorry, I'm just a big, this, I feel like this is like going home. Yeah, oh, I remember that. But thank you very much, ladies.
Any further questions or comments? All right, thank you all very much.
Appreciate your time.
Have a great night.
All right, if there is, if there's no objection from the committee, I would like to take item 8A out of order since we have some other district staff here to present to us. So seeing no objection, let's do the literacy program adoption recommendation.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us this evening. We're really excited to be here. This has been a long process and we're happy to be able to come and provide an update this evening about our elementary literacy pilot and the recommendation. So I'm here this evening with Melissa Bettencourt, our elementary literacy coordinator, Title One Director, but also this evening we have two teachers who served as pilot teachers. We have Annette Owen, third grade teacher from Woven Street, and we have Kristin Russo, fourth grade teacher from West Intermediate.
Thank you for coming.
So we're excited to have them join us to be able to answer questions firsthand about their experience as well.
Great, Christine, but, excuse me, Dr. Brand, just so we also frame for the committee properly, it is your hope that at the conclusion of the presentation, that we would be prepared to approve the recommendation.
Yes, yeah, we're framing this as a new program, academic program. And so with that, consistent with your policy, we're looking, we're ultimately looking for your approval. Thank you.
Just to give you a quick overview, the presentation this evening, we'll review the pilot process that we went through. We'll share with you the recommendation of the committee. We'll share some information about the program we're recommending and talk about the next steps. So you can see on our timeline, and I know you've seen this chart before, we're excited that we're moving down the line on this chart. And we are, here we are, January 2024. We are, we've made our recommendation of the program. With your approval this evening, hopefully, we will be able to then move forward and train staff in March during our CIT day with the intent of a full launch for grades K through five in the fall of next school year. I'd like to acknowledge and thank all of our participants who served on the literacy committee over the last couple of years. This group was the group specifically from this past, this current school year. You can see we had great representation across all of our schools. We've met in this room most of the time and we fill the room. And it's wonderful to have so many participants who are so committed to this process throughout the, from start to finish. So we're very grateful for their efforts. Not only, I think, many districts, when they pilot, will pick, each teacher only pilots one program, but in this case, all of our pilot teachers piloted two programs. So that's twice as much prep and learning and training and preparation and switching gears and pivoting throughout the, you know, we piloted one program for two months and then we said, okay, you've got your training quick, now you switch gears and put on a new hat and start the new one. So they were amazing and really worked hard to ensure that we had a successful pilot. The process itself, you can see, we feels like a million years ago and also like yesterday. But we had, this was held at the North Intermediate School, all of the materials from all of the vendors arrived, it was like Christmas with boxes everywhere. Teachers came and we, Melissa had them set up so that everybody could go through and just touch the materials, look at the materials, go through. We had our own rubrics that we created and checklists that we were looking for to really, that the programs to determine what we felt would be, would it meet our needs? So we started with, I think, eight different programs that we had material samples from. So this was a hands-on day where they kind of rotated through stations and went through their checklist to see, and our goal here was to narrow it down to two programs. As you know, we narrowed it down to Wonders from McGraw-Hill and Inter-Reading from HMH. And I shared the slide before, but just as a review, both of these programs that we selected were, you know, have been vetted through Desi's Curate and Ed Reports as well and have met all expectations. So we felt confident with both of these programs selected as pilot programs, hoping that, you know, knowing that either, you know, whichever one we ended up going with, we felt like it would meet our needs as a district. Here you can see, here we are in the LGIR. We, the committee met monthly to participate in training and share out, the pilot teachers would share out their experiences with the other teachers on the committee. We had multiple stakeholders, so not everybody that would come to our meetings were actual pilot teachers. We had reading specialists, special ed, et cetera. So we'd all, they'd be sharing out their experiences. And, you know, we'd be collaborating together to answer questions and offer support. Here you can see, we use this protocol called the snowball protocol a few times, or twice, I think, during this process. It's a great way to gather anonymous and informal, sort of a dipstick of where people are in the process. So we would ask them at different junctures, you know, if you were forced to make a decision today, which program would you select? Write it down on a piece of paper, crumble it up in a ball, no names on it, throw your snowball in the middle of the room in a pile, everybody go grab a snowball that's not their own, and then they'd open it up and go stand on, if you were in Wonders over here, Inter-Reading on this side of the room. So we got a visual representation that was anonymous to see how many people were over here at this point, how many people were over here. So we did this initially to determine which program people wanted to pilot. We had Wonders, we had a strong majority that chose Wonders as their first choice for the pilot. And then we had the second choice, we had it narrowed down to three at that point. And then the second choice became the HMH Inter-Reading, and we used that protocol to figure that out.
And then we just used it at the end of this past?
Yeah, we used it again to make the, before we were, for Melissa and I truthfully to plan how we were going to go about that next phase of the process. And we found when we did this exercise as sort of like a pre-assessment before the final vote, we saw that was such a strong majority in favor of Inter-Reading that that really helped us frame how we were going to move forward at that point in time. So. So our recommendation is to adopt the Inter-Reading program from HMH for grades K through five. You can see the description of the program here and the continuum of skills, K through five. This program is technically K to six, but I've captured K to five here for this particular pilot. So you can see how it builds. So throughout this process, we had the teachers who were pilot teachers submitted information after they, we started with Wonders, so they did two months of Wonders and they filled out questionnaires independently about their experience with Wonders. And I should back up and say that part of the work that the committee did was to identify what are the areas that were really important to us, what were the must haves that we needed in a program? So you can see here, these categories that we were looking at, we had teacher materials, student materials, academic rigor, student input and engagement, foundational skills, comprehension and writing. Remember that we've selected programs that we knew met all of the, you know, expectations that were evidence-based as well. So these were things that teachers felt they really wanted to make sure, you know, these were strengths for the program. So each teacher entered their scores as we did this. So this was prior to the final vote. So you can see I've bolded the higher score. In the first, the top section, Inter-Reading, the overall rating was four out of five, where Wonders scored 3.2 out of five. You can see across that Inter-Reading was stronger across the board in each of those categories. The bottom just happened to be, in the way we built that survey, was a four-point scale, so that's why I separated that out. But you can see that foundational skills and comprehension were definitely stronger in Inter-Reading than Wonders. Writing, we were slightly off, but similar in writing. So that's information that Melissa and I have been able to gather and will continue to get input from teachers about, you know, what are the strengths and where, you know, is it a particular grade level where writing is, you know, where they're feeling isn't as strong, but still overall out of a four-point scale, having a 3.4 is pretty good. This slide talks about the final feedback. So this was our final vote. This was anonymous and it didn't identify grade levels, whereas the last slide was not, where I got that data from individual teachers. So here you can see a really strong support for Inter-Reading. And, you know, that, so when we did that snowball protocol, we had a sense of where we were going to be, but this data really solidified it for us that we had, you know, 28% of the group would be thrilled, think that it's a really great fit, Inter-Reading. 64% would be really happy and think it's a good fit. The yellow is I'd be okay, I don't have a strong, don't have strong feelings either way. Green, disappointed, purple, unhappy. And then the not applicable was for members of our committee who did not feel that they had enough experience with the program to really cast a vote in, they might not have. So some of our teachers who weren't pilot teachers were in to observe other classrooms or had been, you know, in rooms where that was being taught, they were able to really get a good handle on it. So they were given the option to not vote. So that's when you see an NA, that's where it's from. We also have the ability to filter out just pilot teachers and the whole committee in our survey, but I would say that it's consistent across the But I would say that it's consistent across the board in what those votes were. It didn't sway it in any way by, so that is representative of the entire committee, not just the pilot teachers, it's everyone. So here, I've, on the next, this slide and the next, I just captured some of the comments from the, some of the teachers in their feedback that they submitted. Just a couple that I would point out. The structured literacy slides incorporate stronger phonemic awareness drills, direct handwriting practice and clear phonics practice. Visual vocabulary cards are a beneficial tool for all learners to build knowledge and understanding before examining a new text. Another one that I thought was, that jumped out at me was, the students have voted overwhelmingly. They like this program better because of the stories. I found the stories to be more engaging and the program more manageable. So we didn't have formal, formal questions or formal survey data collected from students, but I think all teachers shared that experience through our conversations around how their students were, how they were reacting. And we did have a score on like how engaged were the students from the teacher perspective. And then just one more I'd point out here. So, you know, I feel, I feel the program has comprehensive units that touch on various topics. I enjoy that they have easy and complete assessments to make sure the students are comprehending. The small leveled books are another great resource. I enjoy the read aloud books that go with the writing assignments. They also provide various graphic organizers that help many different types of learners. So we've got a lot of consistent feedback across from different teachers and from different grade spans. But this is just a sampling of some of the comments that they shared. And I will turn it over to Melissa to talk a little bit more about the actual program itself.
So on the next few slides is an overview of each grade level. First you have kindergarten, then you have first and second, and then you have a three, five slide. So you can click through those and look at those, you know, individually. But I just wanted to point out that they have the shared reading, they have text sets with essential questions that are constantly being touched upon throughout the module. There is small group instruction built in as well as daily writing. And we do intend on purchasing the Rigby Reader libraries with them as well. So we will have decodables as well as the Rigby Readers that will be in each classroom. So it makes it really easy to pull those small groups and have the materials that the students need. Some of the things that I think are strengths of this program is the new structured literacy pathway, which does use that structured literacy that we've talked about in the past where it starts with phonemic awareness, phonics, reading words, reading phrases, reading connected text and then writing. So that's one of the strongest pieces of evidence right now. That's effective instruction in early literacy, as well as it starts with continuous blending. So in the kindergarten level, you really introduce things very slowly. That was one of the things we noticed was the pace was slow. But as soon as they have three or four sounds, they start to blend those sounds into words. And so that is huge. That's much more effective than doing the, what I call tap-tap re-code when you go k, at, cat. Like so the continuous blending and they start reading much earlier with just the sounds that they have learned. So that's pretty amazing. Some of the other things I like, I like the essential questions are really like student appropriate. They're not like very high level, but they're, they're pretty in-depth. And I think the essential questions are really, really good for this program. The module project, so there's actually a project that you can do that students, almost like a project-based learning, where students can be doing it throughout the whole three-week module and demonstrate what they're learning, they're taking what they're learning and then using it in a project. I am not guaranteeing you we're getting to those the first year or the second year, but it's wonderful that it's there and it's all placed out. You know, with project-based learning, while the hard lifts is doing all the work for the project, but those are built in there and they're available to us, which I think is awesome. It has rigorous vocabulary instruction, which I think you will attest to, as well as building knowledge and background information for our students. So it stays on a theme and they really learn about something, which I think is awesome. And then it has social emotional lessons incorporated into it as well. So those are just some of the highlights. The program has a lot and we will make decisions that are appropriate to be manageable, but we have a lot of opportunity to use it the best way for us in the coming years. So, so that is kind of the overview of the materials. It is set up, you know, like a basal reader. So a lot of the components are what you are familiar with back from the, you know, say like 12 years ago from Houghton Mifflin. But the structured literacy pathway is very new for the company and they're still realigning some of the materials and developing materials. But it really is based on that evidence, the best way to teach students how to read at that kindergarten, first and second grade level. And it really provides those foundational skills that then they can take off and use in third, fourth and fifth grade to learn about new things and not be worrying about learning to read. So that's that. Let's see, I'm going to go to next steps. So the next steps would be to, you know, if the committee gives us the approval, we would like to purchase the materials for the pilot teachers so they can continue for the rest of the year using the materials. Then we'd like to order the materials, the teaching materials for all the teachers so that they can have the overview training in March and get that done. Then the literacy committee will continue to meet and develop an implementation plan. We have about five meetings left, so we have a lot of time to develop what next year would look like, as well as what the summer would look like. The teachers will be given an opportunity to collaborate over the summer to prepare for the fall launch. We'll probably talk a little more about that later. Some of the additional things, because there's been like a professional development committee meeting as well as literacy committee, some of the things we're going to add here are some opportunity at that August PD day so that teachers can come together, work grade level, hopefully facilitated, not that I'm volunteering you for anything, but hopefully facilitated by the pilot teachers since they have the experience of helping teachers to plan ahead for what's coming. We also have parent university in the spring. So we'll do an overview session of what the program will be so parents can start to learn about it. And then obviously we'll build out sessions for parents throughout like coffees or something like that so they can come and learn about the new program as well.
And I would just add to the professional development, the, so the committee will be responsible for helping to develop that entire plan for next year. But, you know, I'm a firm believer in, in the fact that professional development is really critical for the success of any program. I've seen programs rolled out that were mediocre programs, but had exceptional professional development and they did really, really well. I've seen phenomenal programs rolled out poorly with minimal PD, just dropped on doorsteps. And it was not successful, there was no buy-in, student scores plummet, you know, plummeted. So I do think that it is really, I feel confident that this is a really solid program. But the implementation is half the battle. Having solid PD that we are able to roll out and consistently provide that support to teachers when they need it. The one and done doesn't work. It's that job embedded coaching that is what they need and it's the frequent opportunities. So, you know, in my experience in the past, I've done, you know, you've done the launch training, which is often just overwhelming, what's in my box, what do I have in materials? But then you give teachers an opportunity to, you know, come together and plan over the summer and offer them stipends or in-service, but not require it. But then provide opportunity in the fall so that everybody's together, having an opportunity to work with a trainer specific to their grade level. And so maybe that's in October, so they have time with a trainer in October. Then that trainer comes, helps them plan through for the next few months and then comes back in December, January. Okay, let's look ahead to the, you know, how did those few units go? And let's look ahead to the next part of the school year. So having it be at different intervals throughout the school year, I find is the most successful way. And then having, the other important component for a successful implementation is having, oftentimes like a committee like this will dissolve once a program is adopted. But we will keep this, a version of our committee up and running for next year and we'll have liaisons per grade level. So pilot teachers will be given priority to become those grade level liaisons to serve as the conduit, if you will, between their teammates and the rest of the committee, the, the rest of the district. So we'll continue to have them come together once a month with Melissa and I to bring problems of practice to us. What's going well, what's, what are you struggling with in third grade regarding this unit? Because we don't, what we don't want is this to become a fractured implementation. We don't want people making individual decisions about, well, I don't think my kids need to know that, so I'm just going to skip that. When really there's a vertical alignment piece that was really critical, that they had that skill because it's going to come back in fifth grade or, and we also don't want the divide between the north and the west sides of town. We want to make sure that if, if the, if there's a problem that's brought forward, that we discuss it together, make a decision together and it's unified across the board. So that process, I think, next year, along with solid PD throughout the year, will be really critical into ensuring that we have a successful implementation, so.
Before I go on to questions, I'd like to do a plug for the family literacy pajama party that's coming up. You do not have to wear pajamas, just so you know, as adults. But I just wanted to plug that, I'm not sure if I'll be here at the end of the meeting.
Well, if it's good for Walmart.
Oh, yeah.
I would mention that on the agenda, it says that it's in the LGIR, but it's actually at the Wilmington Middle School for the pajama party.
Yes.
So. But I would welcome questions and I know we have our two firsthand experienced people here with us. So I would, you know, if you have specific questions that they could answer, we'd welcome that as well.
Ms. Burns.
So I just want to touch upon, I think, and I, and I, I didn't, I gave Dr. Brand a reprieve this week from my three-page question email that I, this one? Historically given him, so I broke rank. I have to say, I think, I think you touched upon one of my, not that it's a concern, but I think it's so well thought out with regards to how the, the plan of action is in rolling this out and continuing and supporting and this ongoing aspect. I love how, and, and I'm glad it was touched upon, how it made reference to the particular one that you're requesting has a lot of, what is it, Greek and Latin roots, which I think is exceptionally vital to language and, and reading and especially in that, in that problem solving, trying to figure out a word by just the Latin roots and, and teaching that, incorporating that, I think it's, I'm very happy to hear that, I'm very happy to hear that. And I, it's just my little thing, but I, and I also think that, just a recommendation, just throwing it out for consideration for the parent university piece, maybe having handouts, not of the, all the materials, but just like a snapshot, parents can look at so they, they can see firsthand what, what it's going to look like so that they perhaps could start thinking about, well, how can I support this? You know what I mean, like they'll be getting on the bus, you know, for one homework and such comes. So I, I do think it's a great segue in, in the building blocks with how you've, you've got the support. I, I, just a really quick question, so the four-point, five-point reference, no, not relevant, okay.
Our own scores, how we created our survey.
Thank you, thank you. I, I would be interested and get a little additional clarification inside, if, with whatever's offered with regards to how this will segue with our Title I students, our ELL students, our special needs, the ability to modify to meet the needs of the classroom, not only with any student who may require modifications of curriculum. I'd be interested in some, I think, early insight, if there's any to share at this juncture with regards to thoughts on that piece.
Anybody want to share?
There is an ELL component to it. I am an ELL teacher, so it's, I haven't really had the opportunity to delve too much into that because I just got a significantly, a student with significant language barriers. So I haven't delved too much into it, but it is there. Every, in every component of the program, there's an ELL, little instructions in the teacher's manual.
Okay, so, but do you find that, and maybe, forgive me if this is not the right phrase. Do you, do you find that with regards to a student with significant language barriers, that this would be a better segue into the language and the writing aspect than what we've previously been using? Like is it a stronger build and an easier access into that introduction for a student of that profile?
Well, what I would say is this program is so much more structured than what we've had in the past. There was almost no structure before. Now this is very structured. So I think the first few years when we're rolling this out, like I teach third grade, I think the students coming in next year who will have not had access to this program are going to, it's going to be, they're going to struggle. But I think with every passing year, the rigor, because it is much more rigorous than what we've been doing. I think that as the years go on, they'll just become more accustomed to the structure of the program and it does kind of like build on each other. And I think that by the time they get to third grade, if they've had it in first and second grade, it'll be really, really well done.
Would you, and forgive me if this isn't fair to ask, because I know this is still in the, the early stages, so I apologize. So would it be safe to predict or hypothesize that it would be a stronger, even over time, even for those where students are onboarding? Like it would, it would, granted with every transition, I think every student will have certain transition, whether regarding their reading abilities or language barriers and whatnot. But do you, do you think that it would be, I guess, a stronger step forward in meeting those goals in a, what, a timelier fashion? So that's what I, I guess I'm trying to, I just want to, generally speaking, I just, you know, comparisons. I've been through a lot of curriculum program changes at this level in my time and I just, I want to, I want to make sure that it offers the flexibility with the least amount of, well, I've got to create this part to meet this curriculum aspect. But, but, you know what I mean, but students, that accessibility in teaching and receiving information for that spectrum of diverse.
Well, I think now you're talking about a combination of print material and digital material. So I think digital material gives access to so many more students that A, may not be able to read it for a number of reasons, right? They may not be able to read it and they may, you know, so being able to hear it and participate more fully in a class as opposed to they can't access the text because it's available only in print. So a lot of these new programs have like A, universal design built into them and B, like lots of accommodations, you know, built through technology pieces that we can integrate. And so they're going to be reading and listening to the same materials, maybe in a slightly different way, but they're still accessing the curriculum. But it was much harder before because we may have to pull an individual book for them and make sure that we can get it in audio and, you know, if you want them to, you know.
And then wait for it to come in if you can.
You know, so anyway, so and we're new in it, so we'd love to give you like in-depth specific things, but we're all new in it ourselves, so.
I wasn't looking for detail, but I just, I think just some insight with regards to the flexibility and the, you know, built into the structure that you've just, you've touched upon to make sure that we can, you know, it may not, it's still a strong step forward, even if, you know what I mean, it might be on weak knees.
We believe it's a really strong tier-one curriculum. And we've spent the last couple of years really trying to build our interventions and all of that for tier-two and tier-three. And we feel that this will really help solidify the foundation so that we ultimately, you know, have fewer kids getting into tier-two and tier-three because we're delivering that instruction to better meet the needs of all of our students in the core classroom.
Fantastic.
Dr. Bryson.
Thank you. I just want to start, I have questions just because I'm so intrigued and interested in this. But I, one, whenever you talk about Christine curriculum and PD, I'm always like, oh, we're in such good hands, so thank you. Because I start by like, wait, what, and I'm just like, ah, like, okay, like everything I'm starting to think about asking and then you talk about how it's going to be delivered, how teachers are going to be onboarded, the support you're going to provide, the work that the team is doing, keeping the team, having grade level liaisons, like all of it is just textbook. So, so thank you, all of you, and then thank you for your leadership because it is, I just, people who are in this world of literacy, I just, they need to know like this is high level, well-done, superb. And so it's great to hear all of those pieces that are already in place, so thank you. I love the emphasis on word study. I love the emphasis on the study beyond the primary grade, so I love the morphology and the vocabulary. So I love the morphology and the vocabulary. And I love the essential questions and the building knowledge. And so my 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 thing here is, oh, I hope we hold on to that because I really, this world of literacy, we know it's engaging and motivating when kids are building knowledge, when they're looking for something, not just because we give them a text that's awesome, but because they're looking to answer some kind of a big question. So I think that's a great part of this program that I don't see in a lot of literacy programs. So I think that's great that it's so built in.
And it's right from first grade on.
Right, it's great.
Kindergarten, so it's not.
But it is one of those things that can sometimes move, I come in, I'm in spaces sometimes where it, it's there, but I don't see it at all, I don't see any evidence of it. And I'm like, oh, where's the essential question? Or what's the unit? Or what are we studying? And students don't even always know. So it's sometimes in, it's built in, but it's not always built in. You know what I mean? And so the fact that you highlighted that, and all of you talked through, I think is great because I think it shows that that's going to be a real move in the positive direction for us. The blending, awesome. That is, again, sorry, this is very exciting. I've been watching so many programs rolling out across different schools and districts. And that's actually a real issue. I'm like, when are they blending? When are they blending? And you don't actually see it. So it's very, it's great, one, that you highlighted it, and two, that you've seen such evidence of it. So that's exciting. My questions are, I see some diverse texts. How did you feel about the incorporation? I just saw a few kind of in those slides. But did you feel like it was a pretty decent array of texts within the anthology? Or do we need to supplement? I'm just curious.
At the end of, I don't know if you saw it, at the end of the slides, I didn't share them this evening, but at the end of the packet, there is some information about the culturally responsive teaching and the, you know, the the text sets have been deliberately selected. So, you know, I think it's obviously, we, we're, they've only piloted a unit or two from the program. So we'll get a better, and we don't have all the materials yet, so we can see what they offer, but haven't really had our hands on all of them. But I think so far, it seemed good.
And there's also social emotional lessons built in. So that is really cool, too. Again, can't guarantee we're going to teach everything first year, but it's all there for us, which is really nice.
Can I keep going? I just have two more, and then I'll stop, I promise. I'll send the rest to Christine and Melissa. But we talked, you talked about student engagement. I'm sort of curious, just a little bit about measurement. I know it was a short, like, of the pilot, but how did you measure? How are we measuring that student engage? What did we see? And did we see any student data? Like, did we compare data from one program to the next? And and what did you notice, I guess?
Well, I can speak first to the data a little bit, and then you guys can talk about engagement. But so we are, you know, so, right, we didn't compare necessarily between the two programs because our pilot is not your traditional pilot, where you start in the beginning of the year and you end at the end of the year and you measure student growth. But we are looking, of course, at our universal screening data because we want to see, are there differences between pilot classrooms and non-pilot classrooms? And how did they do? So, you know, it, we, anecdotally, we've heard from some of our intermediate teachers who've said, I'm so excited for MCAS this year because I think my kids are going to do so much better. So that was exciting to hear, because nobody's ever said they were so excited for MCAS. Sorry, David. But so that was exciting to hear, that the the teacher felt like, okay, I'm really preparing my kids to be able to take this on-demand assessment because, through, through just the data, not because I'm prepping for MCAS, but because I'm teaching high-quality, you know, it's high-quality instruction. We are seeing, you know, we are currently collecting our, we have a couple of grade levels have come through, and we're seeing some good growth in those classrooms. Our younger kids haven't tested yet for the mid-cycle, so we're excited. The dibbles, we're excited to see what where they land with that. But, you know, and again, our pilot was really more measuring the specific elements, knowing that it was re-evidence-based. So but I would speak, give you guys an opportunity to speak to any student engagement that you saw.
The the students were much more engaged with the inter-reading program than they were with the other one. About two, three stories in the second one, they just were excited to go get their blue book and what are we reading now? It it has some plays in it, which we haven't been doing in the past often. And they have just been enjoying those. When I asked my class, we did a little straw poll of which one did you like better? Seventeen to nineteen said this program. And consistent was there are plays in it and there's fairy tales. And they really do a nice job of, within one module, you're reading historical fiction, you're reading a nonfiction, and then a poem. So it's it's really a variety, high-quality text that they're they're diving into. And the questions with the essential question really keeps them interested in it throughout, too.
All right, I'm sorry, just, can I just, well, can I just one more? Just one more thing. It's through grade six. Is there any talk of moving this to grade six? As for that consistency, so that we could then?
I do know in the past, there was with the math program that was a K to six, that was something that sixth grade implemented to finish out the program. That's not a conversation we've had at this point in time with the middle school. It's something that we certainly could consider and look at, you know. And I think it, you know, would be really good for us to kind of get our feet wet and get some experience. But I do think that that's something we could look at.
All right, so I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Turner.
So first of all, two important things. One, thank you to all the teachers on the pilot program. It's a tremendous amount of work to pilot one, let alone two. And then, assuming this is something approved, thank you to all the teachers and all the effort to do all the work of lesson planning again to get this rolling in the fall. It's a tremendous amount of work for all the teachers involved to roll out a new, any new program, anytime you do this. The specific question I had, though, was, one of the things we talked about when you were here before was literacy programs all have different strengths and weaknesses. One of the things of a pilot and even the first year of the program is identifying some of those weaknesses. And we talked about, it could either be on a on a particular portion of the subject or it could be a particular grade level. Some do struggle with kindergarten, for example. Did you find specifically with the inter-reading one, certain weaknesses that you could say, okay, we we understand that, that's, that does have this sort of impact. This is how we can mitigate it to make sure we backfill the pieces that might be a little bit weaker as opposed to the strengths?
Great question. So the data itself did not specifically pull out a specific grade level in that way. However, I would say a couple of things. One, what we heard a lot from our K to two teachers was, we love this structured literacy pathway. We are so excited because we had a choice as a district to choose this pathway or to choose the traditional. And we chose to try this pathway. And it is, it's, it's not complete. There are some components to it that are, other resources aren't quite yet aligned. And again, this is K to two. And the company is working, you know, around the clock to to make those things align and to make those connections. So they, but they kept saying, we're so glad we did this. But that's sort of one thing that, okay, how quickly are they going to get those pieces together? So those are, that's one area that I would say has come up in conversation. I would also say that part of our final survey that we administered asked the teachers, you know, they had to give our, give us feedback on both programs. And the question was, if we were to implement inter-reading, what would we need to do to be successful to implement it? So we have all of that data from everyone that says, so we have, we see trends there, and we can see trends by different grade spans. But, you know, I think one of the clear things that has come up, and Mrs. Owen referenced this earlier, in the sense that thinking about students who might, so let's take a fifth grader next year, for example, who has not been exposed to this program, was not in a pilot in fourth grade. There may be some prerequisite skills that are expected that that student would have had in fifth grade that they may not have been exposed to. And whenever you're doing an implementation that is K to five all at once, you have to plan those contingencies to know that in that first year in fifth grade, we're going to pick and choose our, you know, the, we're going to have to cut some things because we need to build in room for backfilling. So what can we get? What's the greatest leverage? And what do these kids need the most? And what would be nice to have that, you know, it's not an essential, but what can we, you know, what can we reduce so that we can build in time for backfilling skills? So our committee next year will really work to develop pacing guides that will allow for that. You know, our kindergarten will come right in and follow the program as intended because there's, you know, we don't have that issue. But as they get into the higher grades, there's more variation there that we have to plan for. So that's just one example of how some of the things that we would need to do. Professional development, again, came up in the survey over and over again about that would be really essential for, you know, for rolling it out. In the pilot, they didn't give us necessarily hard copies of all of the Ringby libraries. So the teachers were like, it would be really nice that we don't have to print things and that we, you know, have access to those. So those were some of the things.
Thank you. The the resources still being developed part is concerning because when it's not ready for teachers to see before they get into it, it's.
No, it is ready.
So I don't know that I, maybe I misspoke. The program itself is there, the the lessons are there. But there are some extra pieces that might not be within the same theme that, like, there's other resources that aren't, just aren't quite as connected as, maybe you can explain it better.
So what they did is they had their original foundations pathway. Then they created the structured literacy pathway based more on evidence-based teaching, right? So some of the readers and things, skills, like, say, I don't want to go, you know, but. I don't want, I don't want to go too far. But the, like, say it's digraphs. Well, in the original program, digraphs might have been taught in month two. And now with the structured literacy rolls out a little slower, they don't get that to four. So they're trying to realign some of their original, like, decodable texts and more in that type of thing than it is. All the lessons are there and they are ready to roll. And they all include like a short passage, which is the critical part, is if I teach you this phonics skill, I want you to read it and practice it in a connected text. That's all there, and there are materials, they're still building materials. That's a something else that I've learned that's a little different now. You know, purchasing something like this 20 years later after having the original Hope Mifflin years ago, is that it's a lot more dynamic than it used to be.
Constantly changing.
You know, they're really responsive. And I follow all of Facebook pages. I don't know if that makes me old or dorky. I'm not sure, old man dorky. But I follow all their Facebook pages. But I'll tell you, the company responds. And that had an impact on me. I never gave any indication of where I was lying with the teachers. They would ask me, what do you like? Because I didn't want to unfairly make it like biased. I'm not, it's not my decision. I don't teach that day in and day out. They do. But I was like, wow, I'm really impressed that, you know, if you say, oh, there's a mistake here or we'd like this, you can do hashtag wishlist, and they will take it under consideration. And they have produced things. There is like, Annette has a hashtag wishlist. And what is it, Annette?
Vocabulary cards.
There you go. So they print them, K through two, but then three through five, they don't print them. So I've been printing them, which is fine, not a long-term solution. But I, but you hashtag wishlist that, and they will produce things when enough people, you know. So it's been interesting to watch that. And I think that it has to be that way because evidence is evolving and research comes out. And then we're like, okay, maybe we can back off this phonemic awareness a little bit. So we have to understand that it's going to be a little more of that now than you get your books and here's your box of books. And that's it for 20 years. It's just not, you know, so I'm I'm happy about that, but it does make it feel a little like slippery, you know, in that respect, too. But don't feel like they're working from something that's not fully developed because they are.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot. And the one last thing is, is hearing children excited about reading is so cool. That is awesome. Because once they're excited, they'll dive into just, yeah. And so hearing that piece alone is amazing and awesome. So thank you for sharing that piece.
We used to be in isolation, nonfiction for two months, and then fiction. And it's so nice just to have it all blended in together.
That's awesome, thank you.
Mr. Smaha.
Thank you. It's, as as an English teacher at the high school level, it's, it's, it's so nice to hear this conversation about, because it's, you know, sometimes high school teachers, if kids aren't, don't have the skills, blame the middle school, middle schools have to blame elementary. So it's, it's, right. So it's, it's, it's really nice to 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 see all of this, you know, discussion around really building these skills, because that's what's, I think, is 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 critical. One of the things that I also want to applaud is the teacher-centric nature of this. Again, like, as as a teacher, like, I mean, I don't know how every district does it, but I know in Boston, I have never piloted a curriculum, like, ever. I've never been asked to do that. I have been, have had several curriculums over the past 20 or so years dumped on me without the professional development. So I'm just like, as as Jen was really excited about this, it makes me excited that this is happening in a way that teachers are gonna have that buy-in, right? Because they know their students, you know. And like you were saying about, you don't want to bias them, right? Because you're not the one in there teaching it day in and day out. I think that's, I think that's important to say about, I think, about Wilmington in in general, is that the focus here is really on students, and that means teachers. When I looked at some of the the data, it says, you know, the Wonders program, 56% of the teachers said it's not a good fit or it's not appropriate, right? As opposed to 92% saying it's either a good or great fit. Like, those are like, you know, when you look at like ed reports, it's like, oh, this one and this one, they they're about the same, oh, okay, right, we'll just pick one of them, right?
They made our job easy.
But it's like, it's like, that's like a huge, huge difference in in two programs that on the surface might look relatively similar. So that's just, so so thank you for 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 doing this. It's like definitely the right, in my opinion, like, it's definitely the right step. So I just want to commend you for for going through this. And for the teachers for for piloting this. I know that it's, yeah, it's, it can be, it can be a lot of work. And it can be scary going from what you know into something that you that you don't know. So, thank you.
Mr. Venely.
Thank you. And thank you in the committee for the work putting this together. My comment is is basically what Mr. Smaha said. I was really, maybe intrigued is the word, to see that this wasn't close at all. I mean, inter-reading one by far. So for folks watching at home, I mean, this wasn't, this wasn't close at all. My question is kind of related, kind of unrelated, and we may not know the answer, and that's okay. But I'm curious if there's a significant price difference between one or the other.
Not really. I mean, you know, we get price quotes throughout the whole process. And then, you know, Melissa and I go back as we get close to this process, and we say, no, now give us a real price quote. And not just the sales price quote, but now we give them numbers and we look at, you know, making sure, you know, don't, we go through item by item with them and say, no, 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 but wait a minute, our teachers piloted with this, but that's not on here. Is that, you know, so we really go through it with a fine-tooth comb to get that information. They're relatively equitable. I will say, there was one program initially that didn't make the cut in the first round because it was the financially, it was not something, I don't know how any district could afford it.
It was a million dollars.
But it would have been like a, to implement, yeah, close to a million dollars.
An extra side of staff?
I think it should come with a whole bunch of teachers, yes, to implement it. So we did say, I'm sorry that you like that, but.
No, they didn't. Good luck in the future.
Yeah. So relatively similar, I would say. And and again, just as a reminder, we will be able to fund a good portion of this through grant funding.
And the other thing is, we don't skimp, like, we want special education to have everything. Any sub-separate classroom gets everything, like, it's for all of us. So that, it adds up, you know, when you, but it's the right thing to do.
It's the expectation, though, because all students.
All students should be needless as a core.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
I love the process that you've described to us as far as, you know, the entire way that this was developed and is planned to continue to develop. I'm a big process person. And I think that doing this in partnership, the way that it was done with the teaching staff, you know, it's like, we acknowledge that it's a lot of work to, you know, learn the new pilot materials, and then, oh, learn a second one and to do it. But but teachers are willing to do it when they're going to have influence on what the curriculum is that they end up teaching for years into the future. And and that's the, you know, it's, it's the kind of collaboration that really, you know, that really makes a, you know, a district able to go forward. And the idea that not just that we have good substance, that we have like a substantively good program, that there's good material, good foundations, good bones to it, but that we're really thinking in terms of, how do we follow through? Because the follow-through is so important to everything, to making almost anything succeed. And that it's not just this year, but it's the year after that. And that it's going to be a little different the year after that. Because, you know, next year, as you, you know, you mentioned, it's like, all right, everyone's coming in new. Because, you know, next year, as you, you know, you mentioned, it's like, all right, everyone's coming in new. And so the, you know, the fourth graders will be learning this for the next, you know, for the first time. We have to make certain adjustments. But the year after that, they'll have had it in the third grade. And they'll have had a year of it in the third grade. And now they're coming into fourth grade. So that's a little different. And again, each year, you have more years of the program having been in place before people show up in your classroom. And so the thinking about that and how we're going to kind of, you know, adjust and keep this going forward, I think is really, is incredibly important. It's just, you know, it's hitting all the right notes. Lastly, I want to mention Christine, that MCAS is my job. It's not my passion. Not what gives meaning to my life, so.
Sorry, Mr. Ragsdale. I was excited that they were excited about MCAS too.
Other questions and comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So much.
For all your time.
So, so, yeah, so, so, but, but of course, before we leave this topic entirely, I would entertain a motion to approve inter-reading by Houghton Mifflin-Harcourt as the new elementary literacy program. I have a motion by Mr. Fenely. Second by Dr. Bryson. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? And that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for being here, folks.
Thank you.
You all right over there?
I know, we know it's the reason why you breathe.
I think you like it a lot more than you say.
So it was a good one. Brings back memories of Steve.
All right, so we're gonna come back now to do business, to item seven B. We have some, five policies here for first reading. Dr. Brand or someone on the policy, would you like to set this up for us, what we're looking at here?
Well, I, I can certainly start, but there's, there's many folks around the table. We, we are working with the support of your colleagues around the table here at trying to get back up to speed and gather some momentum around regular policy review. Just as a, as a, as a point of reminder, a regular review of your policies is considered good practice. We got some great traction started a number of years ago, some stops and starts with COVID and the pandemic. But full force and a full commitment to try and move forward. The policy book, we've started at the, at the beginning and working our way through, not just recently, the beginning, but picking up where we left off. There's an effort to try and prioritize some that emerged that might seem more, uh, more time pressing or the time element with them. So you'll, you'll continue to see, I think, a number of policies for you going forward over the next, over the balance of this year. And we have First Bank here for your consideration and First Read.
Okay, so first we have policy EEAEA one, drug and alcohol testing for school buses and commercial vehicle drivers. What's, what's new here?
I think if you look at through the policies, the changes or additions are the highlighted sections. Everything else is the same from the previous version.
And re, yeah, and reads, it's in line with MASCE policy handbook.
Okay, so that I did, that added, highlighted section was simply added corresponding to the MASCE reference manual.
Correct.
Okay, any questions?
Questions on the whole bucket or on one of them at a time as we're going through them?
I just, I think we just do the one at a time.
Okay, carry on then.
Okay, so any, any questions or comments on EEAEA one? And then we have EE AEC, apparently also JICC. And so just a couple of references updated. Student conduct on school buses, but the substance of the policy is the same. Okay, any questions or comments? All right, and.
Sorry, I do have.
Oh, okay, Dr. Bryson.
Well, I'm wondering if we should add guardians, because we've done that consistently. So we should probably, parents of children, but we probably should do parents, guardians. Sorry about that.
That's.
I don't think this was mine, so I'm not gonna.
So just going back to EE AEC.
Although I did review them in a meeting with all of you, so I don't know what happened.
Parents slash guardians.
So in the second paragraph, parents slash guardians of children.
In the first sentence too.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
We can make that change.
I'm sorry, I, I have a, I have a question as well. The, where, it's, is this, is this policy, it's also JICC? Like, does it need to be in two places? Like, is it just a repeat of the same policy in two places? And does that need to be?
It, it does because it pertains to, I believe JICC is student, I can't remember.
It's gonna be student and ones, you know, be like facilities or.
Transportation.
Transportation policy, so it's.
Needs to be in two places. Okay, all right, just make sure we're not being redundant.
I, if it helps too, I, I think there may be one or two other policies that may fall in similar fashion.
Yeah, there's a few.
All right, so we'll make this change, parents, guardians. Anything else on EE AEC?
And it's, sorry, and it is listed like that in the MASCE handbook, so just wanted to confirm.
Okay, then we have EEAG, student transportation in private vehicles. And so a new item added. And again, just being consistent with, with MASCE.
And the only thing would be the same point on, on the third bullet there, parents of. Yep.
Thank you.
I know what happened to us. I was like, are we meeting?
All right, so we'll, so in, in, in number, in number three, we'll change that to parents slash guardians of students to be transported.
Yeah, and number four was added to, to mirror MASCE, right?
Okay, and then we have EFD, meal charge policy. And it looks like the substance of that policy is the same and it's just updating the references. Mr. Turner?
I, I, it's fine as written, but I'm curious about, it's written before we made the changes to free meals. And it, and it, obviously they're captured because it says, you know, regularly reduced price or free. But it would, I would think there would be a general rewrite coming from MASCE to align with where the, it's gotten, because it does, it reads weird when most of it is not charged.
So we have another meal policy that is under review, but will be reviewed, I believe, tomorrow, that I think may capture that element.
Okay.
So this, there's two, so. And, and, and perhaps that if, after tomorrow's policy meeting takes place, perhaps that'll come forth if we can get on the agenda for the next meeting. And maybe it might make it easier for board members to compare the two policy and offer revisions.
Yeah, well, I'm not necessarily.
No, no, I ended.
Suggesting we have to change it today, but I'm assuming it's one we'll need to get back to again. You know, like, maybe it'll be updated from MASCE next year and so we might have to come back to this one.
Just a policy to keep our eye on.
Yeah.
Right, but if it changes in the interim before that time, we can always make those changes. We don't have to wait a whole year's review.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and lastly, we have policy GBA, equal employment opportunity. And so is there anything substantive here at all? Or not? All right, so just updating when we last reviewed it, but otherwise no changes. All right, so with the additional changes that mentioned tonight, mostly about a little bit of language tweaking, we can bring these back for approval.
Yes, at the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Put those into the consent agenda.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Policy Subcommittee. All right, that brings us to Subcommittee Reports. Are there any Subcommittee Reports to share?
Are we missing one agenda item, 11F?
Did I jump over?
Yeah, I think it's the last one. On upcoming.
No, we haven't gotten there. Word eight, Lain.
All right, we did preschool, we did the policies.
I'm sorry, maybe, maybe it's my, oh, my apologies. I'm looking, not looking at that, I'm looking at the content, my apologies.
So any Subcommittee Reports to share?
Other than that, the Wellness and School Committee meeting, as you may know, has been postponed for next week, so.
I saw that. And of course, we had a Wildwood School Building meeting between our last meeting, but that has already been covered in the superintendent's report, so.
Actually, one, one quick one. WEF is contemplating an additional fundraiser that would be kind of, they have currently the bins in the different schools to accommodate clothing drive-in. They actually, it's a good part of their fundraising. They're looking at a spring clean-out equivalent, which would be a much larger scale and encourage people to donate in more bulk at that point in time. They, it is, it is part of, a good part of their fundraising and they may expand that slightly because coming years is one of their efforts. And so don't clean things out yet. There may be a good opportunity to help the district.
Can, can I, would they, so you've, are you the WEF? So is it almost like a shredding day kind of thing where like one day they would collect some things?
It may not be just one day. They're working on the details, but it would be somewhere in the springtime aligned with, with that sort of season and that sort of thing. But, but an expansion basically of what they're already doing with this, but, but a little bit more of a focused campaign, so, thank you.
Actually, I do have a quick Subcommittee Report. I just realized that there's a CPAC meeting last week that was mostly focused on the tiered monitored review that the district will be going under. And consisted also of a presentation from some folks at DESI in the Public School Monitoring Office, who also kind of walked through the committee and, and then the other parents on the, at the meeting, on the call, through the, through the process of tiered focused monitoring and how to reach out to them for, to give information and feedback.
Could you re, remind me, is this the mid-year cycle review that they're doing or is it the?
This is our, every, every three years.
Right, but, but there's a, that's a halfway point, so that's where I'm.
No, this is the start of the.
This is the beginning, okay, thank you, thank you.
And this is the, so there are different types of the focused reviews. This is the one that's focused on generally special education and compliance. The sort of the, the tick, the tick-tock is more focused on civil rights.
Sure, okay, thank you so much for clarifying that.
All right, correspondence.
None this evening.
All right, so now we just have future events, not in this list, but I'll mention those coming up. But what we heard about at the very beginning of the meeting is The Little Mermaid opening in the Joanne M. Benton Auditorium tomorrow night at 6:30, running again on Friday night at 6:30 and on Saturday at 3 o'clock. And so everyone in the town should be there. Maybe the auditorium doesn't fit, even three nights, three days of shows won't fit everyone. But it's going to be a great show, so everyone, please come out and show your support to these middle school students and the production team and the high school students who have also been helping with the production since the very beginning. A lot of people put a lot of work into it. On the 24th, we have our next regular session meeting at 7:00 PM. The 25th is a School Building Committee meeting at 6:00 PM. On the 31st, the men, aforementioned Family Literacy Pajama Party, pajamas optional. February 2nd is our Community Forum for the Wildwood MSBA Project.
The first.
Ah, sorry, February 1st. I'm looking at the right thing, I just can't speak the right letters. February 7th is the next School Building Committee meeting. The 13th is the LGBTQIA+ Parent Discussion Group. Information about that also in the packet. On the 14th is Budget Hearing and our next regular session meeting. So that will be our public budget, budget hearing. And February Vacation from the 19th to the 23rd following that.
I can just add one item. The mindfulness workshop that was scheduled for last evening has been rescheduled to January the 30th at 6:00 PM. It will be here in the Large Group Instruction Room. And that is being offered by our Family Engagement Specialists. Again, that's the mindfulness workshop, rescheduled to January 30th. Thank you.
All right, and that reaches the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
All right, motion Ms. Burns, second by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.